I keep coming across more and more things.
Can we all say our flag of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his soul, with liberty and justice for all.
What did your wish for the... A full amendment from the board? And do we accept it as presented?
Second?
All in favor? The next upcoming SLIDE board meeting is October 7th at 5:30. Can we get some clarification on when these meetings are being held?
That meeting will be here. The all-keeper meetings will be at Town Hall. The Fire Hall was previously... September, we should be ready to roll with Fire Hall. September, November.
Okay.
So going backwards.
Okay, that would work, alright. So here through the health of October and then we'll get the... Thank you. Selective comment announcements? This is item one, agreement for council services Midcoast Economic Development District. We're not making counsel so much as consulting.
Okay, we may need both, but you have this.
We may need counsel there too.
Perhaps. So there's an amended agreement for services in your packet.
Are there extra copies?
Um, yes.
Sorry, I didn't ask at the time.
And there's also a list of work plan tasks that Max provided. I would also recommend that people take a look at Waller Burrows Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Ordinance. Those are the two documents that Max was primarily working on for McCad. They're very lengthy documents, so we don't have copies printed out. But anybody who's interested in looking at those documents should go to Waller Burrows' website.
Okay. So this... This, um... Does have the... The specifics of what will be done that was requested by another couple of last time. I think so, yeah. I'm just trying to stick to the one meeting for a month and broken down into what would be discussed at the first meeting.
Is that for Comprehensive Plan or is that for the ordinances?
Looks like both.
Both together or each? It's just confusing when you throw it all together.
Yeah, maybe Max could probably add some clarity to that.
Well, it should be clear in here, right?
Not necessarily. He can explain how it works.
Okay.
Well, I would set the meetings up for the Comprehensive Plan and for the Land Use Ordinance provisions. It would be based on the schedule the planning board would set for me. Because I assume this is a planning board I would work with and not a special committee for a land ordinance revision.
For the ordinance piece.
For the ordinance.
So, so the discussion even last time you were here was confusing to me because we weren't differentiating whether asking or answering questions whether it was a Comprehensive Plan or the Land Use Ordinance. So it was tough to tell what you were talking about. And when people were asking questions, the same goes though. I guess to me they're two different things even though they're intermingled. You're gonna have a committee of town people for the Comprehensive Plan. You're gonna be dealing with the planning board for the land use ordinances. So when you're talking about it, as long as you can figure out whether you're talking about Comprehensive or Land Use, that would be great.
Okay.
And then is it divided out in here too or is it all intermingled?
Um, the board asked for one contract, so they're together in one contract.
It was meant to be spread out over the eighteen-month or two-year area where I did end up putting there. And most of the work I was hoping to do, perhaps starting June of next year, although it can be sooner. Again, that's why I say it depends on the planning board.
Which work, on the Land Use or on the Comprehensive Plan?
And that's laid out on the contract on the third page.
There's a grid? Yep. On that, so the list. So you're talking about not touching anything for land use ordinances until June of 2022?
Right. In the Comprehensive Plan, we talk about provisions being made to the Land Use Ordinance based on what the residents say. And then I can start that for the Land Use Ordinance provisions. But as I say, if the planning board doesn't want to start the Land Use Ordinance provisions sooner, then I don't mind doing that.
Okay. I think it would eventually be a Comprehensive Plan then.
Right, because that's mostly even focusing on a lot of the divisions to the sections.
So we talked in the last planning board meeting, we addressed this with the board. And it may be beneficial to have perhaps a kickoff meeting for them as well. So we can talk about, if you've had a chance to review the town ordinances. And then, and then they can share what they've done and what their concerns are. And then that would give them a chance to maybe do some work heading into it instead of waiting almost a year for that, to, so that we have an idea of what's new. And there's gonna be elements that will come out of our monthly meetings that will tie into ordinances. We just grew out a meeting last week and I'm gonna say there's like ten new state things that trickle down into our ordinance use like tiny hoppers. So there's pieces that need to be maybe shared with them so they can see how they're gonna start to integrate those into what we're doing as a town as well. But I don't want to wait almost a year for that.
And that's fine. I was just giving an example of a draft schedule and that's why I say it's up to how... And I'm fine with that kickoff meeting a lot sooner. I'm fine working with the planning board a lot sooner. I was just getting a draft schedule.
So I have some handle on back then on who it was.
I was just gonna say that you just went a minute ago and said that he would work as soon as the plan would water through.
Right.
Yeah, if you want to do an actual hunt, find him open.
Yeah, sure.
Right, but I guess even looking at the, you look at page two and your, your work plan tasks. Do any of those apply to the ordinance review changes? Number five has a land use plan. I mean, that I think is... That's inside the comp plan, I believe. But are they not cousins? No, they're not. One is a wish, the other one is a law rule.
Number fifteen and number sixteen.
They need to be over each other though.
Number fifteen.
They do. Fifteen...
And sixteen.
But you'll be doing that during your Comprehensive Plan portion, correct?
Well, fifteen, identifying revisions and changes to the ordinance throughout the planning process. Sixteen, I say after counting approval, create, draft revise ordinance for review approval. I can remove, I can just remove that beginning language.
So I guess what I'm looking for is, is the level of effort for the planning board and how you see the task going forward that the planning board is going to be assisting with as far as this contract goes. And underneath tasks, I don't see anything about meeting with planning board about ordinance changes or anything like that. So I guess that's why I'm confused.
I'm concerned that we're overcomplicating the agreement. What Max has laid out is a sample of a timeline that may or may not work for West Side. Every town drives its own process. Max is here to facilitate. So the town will end up setting the timeline for when these tasks get looked at.
I wasn't looking for a timeline, I was looking for sort of a layout of what the task would be as far as ordinance changes.
The first page, I'm right on the last whole one on "Writer A sets of land use ordinance will be revised in conjunction with the Comprehensive Plan with cooperation by the town planning board and submitted for town consideration." I, I don't know how specific on the details I can really be because if it gets to the, what we were just talking about with, you look at the draft schedule and say, "Max doesn't start until June 2022." Well, we can start earlier than that and I don't want to debug out every single time specific detail.
I'll look more towards tasks. Are... What involvement are you looking at from the planning board as far as?
Similar to the Comprehensive Plan. I'll take the ordinance. I did this with Appleton actually last night for the Comprehensive Plan. I did the start kickoff meeting where I simply show what I've done and the board gives me their thoughts. You know, what's the biggest problem you're facing? What, what do people look for in the ordinance for these revisions? What do you see as an issue in the ordinance? And then I'm going by maybe section by section or article by article and I'm addressing that. And I'm inputting into the language, like you may say, "There are some items that we missed because it's a staple that we didn't apply." Well, I'll look at the staples that need to be inserted. Or you may say, "It's, it's hard to read it." People don't know what section or article they're supposed to go with. So that's what I might do, just break down sections and articles and make them easier to read. It might just be the language is odd and you want something a bit more easier to read that someone who isn't from West Side might understand.
So do you proof the ordinance book and edit almost line by line how it reads?
And then I get that to you by the next meeting. Go over maybe one or two sections and do a read-through so that it makes sense to you. Because I'm, I'm doing it from my perspective, not from here, not dealing with the book every day. But I'll go to the planning board and say, "This is the section that makes sense to me. Does it make sense to you?"
Right. Okay. And then after we review it and have our thoughts back, then what happens?
Then we do the next, well, what I usually like to do is...
Who's marking these up as doing the final edits?
That would be myself and Hannah Siskel McCad. We read through it section by section, you give us the notes. We continue on with the section by section. And then when we've gone through it all, we do one big read-through and say, "Well, these were the changes that you all made." And it would be a bit faster to go through rather than one section at a time. You'd probably do two or three at that point.
Right.
Unless the words...
So you have, do you still have the book of edits that Donovan gave you? Tiny syntax and...
Yeah, it's, it's a place, I see his reading in there to cross-reference because he did a lot of work on that to, and so before we part, let me make a copy of it.
I think he's done this several times and that he knows what he needs and wants that. We need to let him and Donovan work together and not input our...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, we all work and we've already got one meeting and I plus extra going in and checking things and all the rest. So the board was looking for the level of effort if, if this was gonna be a thing where we were giving you our input and then you were doing edits and doing your thing because you're well versed in this and have done it before and then you just kind of go back or whether you're gonna be driving the train, we were doing all the edits. Because that's not something that anyone on the board is interested in doing because we just don't have the time.
Right. And that's just that I'm doing most of the edits and then I'll see what schedule you have. If you have someone from your board every month and don't have time to do it, I might see if we can schedule a different time to be a dedicated ordinance meeting.
It would have to be a different night than I normally want. The other night was till eight forty-five and nobody at eight forty-fives wants to sit down and try to think about the ordinances.
I certainly don't want to do that.
No.
I'm sorry, he's had a fan.
Yeah, I, I just wonder, what is your meth- methodology of editing the ordinances? Just as a guess, what percent of changes are you suggesting to make it in conformance with your comp plan? And what percentage of the effort is looking for flaws in the present ordinance?
Well, that's why I need to start looking at the Comprehensive Plan first to see what residents or whoever's gonna be on that committee has to say with the ordinance. Again, I'll use Appleton as an example. They stated how one thing they want to make sure is that a lot of farmland gets preserved and they want to make sure that's in the ordinance. And as, well, tiny homes is becoming a big issue. One is the preference of the town, that I just need to find the right spot to include that. And then when I get to the planning board, I say, "This is something the Comprehensive Planning Committee pointed out." How do we make the language work? And then the other being the state, it's a matter of just getting the state language and saying, "This is the non-emotive stuff that we can include so that you're not lost on it. And here's where you're a bit more flexible of what you want to do."
So it allows the town to maintain its own persona as a community?
Some of the things that sound good in a comp plan is like low-cost housing. That was something that was pushed before. And they asked us to take our three-acre zoning and change it into two or one-acre zones. And we sat down and went back, I think it was the state planning board at the time, and pointed out that a three-acre lot that was buildable and a one-acre lot generally at that time were going for the same price. And also, we had a great deal of water issues in the town with saltwater intrusion in places like Shoal Cove and such. And therefore, they wanted to increase down at Birch Point their acreage requirements to greater than they were before, which seems to be in conflict with what the state was asking for. And I, and I'm making a bit of a side here. I misspoke before. Right now, I think I am going to come up with fifty to seventy-five flaws in the ordinance, some of which are exceedingly subtle. And so I'm just doing this as an individual, not as a planning board task. And the problem with some of that is when we identify the problems, we have to get the voted on at town meetings. And that can be a challenge. But as I say, I, I'm not speaking officially, but I think some members of the planning board at our last planning board meeting thought that the $2,000 for ordinance review was not necessary to the extent that the $4,000 for the comp plan. Now, you are responding to the Board of Selectmen, but I just thought I'd mention that as perceived by me alone individual, a number of members in the planning board didn't see how $2,000 by an outside group who wasn't used to the ordinance would be productive. But I rest the case. That's just reporting and perceived fact by one person.
Well, I think with his experience and then reviewing our ordinance, that he's not new to this. So I think he's gonna be able to facilitate working on your fifty or seventy-five changes fairly rapidly because they're in some cases administrative versus elements for, for review where your commas are missing and whatnot. So I think those are, those are pieces that he can rapidly go through there and help facilitate those implementations. And Max J has been working on the ordinances how long now?
Oh, about half a century.
He's been on the board a very long time and I learned from him how to do that the right way. So he and I have been doing it for a while.
Yeah.
Me not fifty years.
Well, no, I was sort of on board in the early seventies.
So he knows the whole thing pretty well.
And working with Peter Orsoretto, who's a very effective colleague in that process.
Which should even help his process more because he's got two people with expertise. So I think having a third person who's on the outside, who doesn't have any vested interest in this can help us move some of those little things along.
The other part of it is that this, the $2,000 for the land use ordinance, so I'm gonna make sure I'm looking at comments that I leave. Yeah, the $2,000 would be upon completion. I can just start the initial kickoff meeting with the planning board and see where they're at. If they choose they don't need to do land use ordinance, then we can amend and revise the contract later. Because the $2,000 wouldn't be going to McCad until I do have updated land use ordinance. So if it's a matter of me going to one or two meetings to say, "That looks good" and helping improve it, then that's, that's fine, but...
But I think the editing process and getting the whole book in a proper format and having formatting issues that are creating pieces, I think that's something that should be done.
Right. My, my, I'm just pointing out with what Jake, Jake, right?
Jake, yeah.
What Jake just said about what the last planning board meeting said. If they're not comfortable with it, like, you know, tonight, you're not giving a $6,000 check. You're giving it when the work is complete. So if anything changes between now and then, then we should simply talk about amending contracts, so.
Yeah. And I think it, I think it has value to do this, I think. We had issues last year that upset the board a lot. Working as hard as we did and then things were just mixed and not even, you know, ninety-nine percent not put forth to the town. So there's a little bit of that. But I, I think our big concern too was just the level of effort if we were gonna be, end up being the ones doing all the editing and that sort of thing. Just don't have that amount of time. And I was worried that the selectmen don't understand the magnitude of everything in the book that really needs to be worked on. And that it may not get done in the timeframe that they think it's going to be. And then I think that there was a comment once where someone said, "We just want it one and done so we don't have to do this every year." And you know, yes.
It's not all one and done.
No, it's never one and done. It's good to get the whole thing in a good place, but it's never one and done. Tiny homes come up, marijuana comes up, all these different things. It's, it's, it's not one and done ever. But we can, we can, we can get it to a very good place.
We can get it to a very good place. Fix the grammatical elements that are missing and put it in a structural format that's easier for us to edit, which is not there right now.
Is the, is the... Oh, do you...
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just...
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry.
Are we discussing any of the particulars of this particular contract? Or we have, we have in this contract, it calls for McCad to work with us as a consultant in both our land use ordinances and in our Comprehensive Plan with a goal of having them compatible. There's a termination possibility. There's a, there's an assignment that says that the work can be subcontracted. We've got the, we've got the staff assignment. We have specifications. I don't see that there's much to discuss further with the specifics of the contract. The contract asks, does what we asked for in the last meeting. We, the specifics, there's a timeline. The clarification has been made that Max will work with the planning board as the planning board requests. The clarification is made that Max is going to be working to provide the initial edits in consultation with the board about what specifically, the planning board about what specifically needs to be addressed according to them. Is, are there any questions involved in what we're doing here?
I'm confused. I'm allowing for Max if I may, or, or for the board. Is this, looking at it from June twenty-two to June twenty-three town meeting? I know that June twenty-three town meeting and the ordinances have to be done in March. So it's really June twenty-two to March twenty-three? I'm guessing that that's not gonna be enough time. Is there a provision for an extension if needed?
That or a public, if we have to change to a different public meeting. I mean, we, it's, I don't know if we want to necessarily put something in stone that says, "We have to be done at this point."
These are, you know, for sure data, I think. I mean, this is all a rough, rough draft on this timeline, right?
Right.
That can be changed as you go along, as we do.
But if we're not ready in March for a full review, we have a special meeting at some later date when we are.
If I can clarify, the March timeline is for a printed ballot and this would be voted on at the open town meeting, perhaps? Well, so that's April, it's not much longer usually.
Well, still, if, if we can't meet that deadline, I think McCad is able to offer some flexibility.
If you change the deadline, we call a special town meeting.
Yep.
And that, that's really a self-imposed deadline. It's not something that McCad will require.
Right. And the ordinances cannot be modified at a special town meeting. That's in there because there was a case where some people with special interests were gonna flood the special town meeting and get their changes pushed through. So that's why there is wording somewhere in here that says you cannot change stuff at a special town meeting.
The two items I'll just say on that is, one, on the first page of the contract, under terms, in the last sentence, either party may request an extension upon request. So if it's a two- to three-month extension, then it's fine, no issue. If you're asking for a two-year extension, then that's probably gonna be a different conversation.
Yeah, I just wanted to leave a provision in there that it could be needed to...
Yes. Either party may request an extension. And the second part is, when we get to the end and I do have an ordinance and you're just waiting for a town meeting, then you're just waiting for a town meeting at that point. I don't think I have to be here every month at that point. But, and the contract will still stand, it's just a matter of, did you ever meet your home for a quick one-hour talk and find you?
Well, I think it's gonna evolve. I don't, I don't think we know what elements are required at what time. I think, you know, we've got certain, we're trying to get the Comprehensive Plan, where we've got certain people on committees to take each of those buckets forward. We're not even there yet as well. So we need to ramp up our volunteers for that as well to make sure that we all stay on target. So we've got some behind-the-scenes work to get done too.
I move acceptance of the agreement as presented with today's date specified as the effective date.
I second it.
All in favor?
I look forward to it. I think it's the reality exercise for the town.
Mine is slightly off, it's late, I thought we were after...
Yeah, we all thought we were at the Fire House.
Okay, so I wasn't the only one?
No.
No, you were.
Is it bingo night, is that what it is?
Thank you for hosting the scrapbook. We appreciate you coming here.
Was it bingo night?
No, no, it was scrapbook.
A scrapbook? I would've gotten a bingo night.
They did not want us intruding on it.
It's a brand-new painting, I think they worked it out.
I got my book, it's still off, but I think it's...
I don't know, five weeks after the meeting.
It's kind of tough for someone, for a planning board or a...
I don't think so. The only other argument to talk about is how to...
Because someone who's kind and controlled the planning, you change a section or something.
They do have some reasons.
Probably the other church.
For volunteering for that.
So we came up with a whole bunch of us.
So this is item number two is committee appointments. West Side Disciple Committee, Mary Anna Vock, her term beginning immediately and expires September thirty of 2022. Comprehensive Plan Committee, David Hennessy and Robert Weir, each return beginning immediately and expires June thirty of 2023. Comprehensive Plan Committee, David Hennessy and Robert Weir to return beginning immediately and expire on June 30th, 2023. 24. Well, it says 2023, this contract is 24.
Yeah, it's for a year term.
Right.
So the, the contract is for 24?
Okay, well, that's, we were just projecting it, 2023 completion of the contract.
Yes, that is not gonna go another year longer.
Right. The board might consider 21 years, each existing committee to serve on the comprehensive plan committee. A full committee of appointed members is necessary to fulfill the state's requirement for the comprehensive planning process. How, how many people are required by the state?
I think as long as we have a handful, is there a particular number, Max? I, I would think that if we had five members, that would satisfy the requirement. What do you think?
Five would be fine.
Okay.
So we have two.
Yeah, a couple of other possibilities that I was talking to.
There's, well, some people, so we had on a Zoom meeting, there were a couple of people that shared their...
Oneida.
Consider, Oneida was one of them, I'm trying to think who else in that meeting, there's another person that said it. And maybe we'll pull up if you can figure out the minutes from that meeting.
Doesn't matter as long as we get the, right, we get the.
Right. Doesn't matter. At least we'll, we'll reach out to those that raised their hand, say, okay, we're here. Let's, are you still interested? Cause they, we kind of call as we should.
I can't see those frames then. So I guess, I guess we want to keep people on those frames.
I can too, I'm trying, can't remember, but I, I would be on the minutes and then we should be able to figure it out.
And there were people who, who had stepped over for the plan a couple of years ago. Perhaps, I don't know, to them.
Yeah.
Just see if they're interested. Darling, number three.
Number, you wanna be number three for the comprehensive plan? I thought you were going to either number three, okay. We need you to fill out an application, if you wanna.
Really? You have to do the application?
Simple application.
It's a very simple one.
It's 15 pages, but not bad.
David's in there, if you wanna read his before we fill it out.
It's a farthest, can we motion to approve?
I'm hoping that we approve Marianna Bog to the recycling committee and David Hennessy and Robert Weir to the comprehensive plan committee. I second that. All in favor?
Is the application on our outside page?
I think it's very, I think it's too many.
It was, I have a list of holders, taxes, and I have Dr. Darling and.
We need to talk about it.
Into Oneida.
We need to talk about it.
She raised her hand, I'm not for sure.
And the school.
And it's if you find adults from that previous meeting, cause of like three or four of the people. Did Jeremy say he wanted it?
I seriously doubt it, you can ask him to remember the planning board meeting, we're excited for the more people.
But I thought he raised his hand for that.
I did ask him, he said, think about it.
He did, I mean, he, he wasn't saying no.
He wasn't too enthused, but he said, think about it.
He, he wants to be involved in a lot of stuff, but he's just so busy with business, so.
That's what he told me.
So what I'm hearing is just reach out to anybody who sort of may be expressed interest in the past. Are you concerned about getting representation from any particular committee? Marie's resources comes along.
I think we should see if we can get somebody from Marie's resources.
If there's somebody on that committee who you think would be a good fit, we can contact them or we can.
And I've just, even, I don't think it necessarily needs to be a good fit. I think sometimes having conflict is good or difference of opinions, um, somebody who may be a little bit more vocal.
It's just they need to know what they're talking about.
Absolutely, but saying a good fit makes it sound like you have a group of individuals that you want to select and it has to be a good fit with one another, so if you can't.
I think it would be nice, would be nice to have a school board member.
Or somebody who's deeply involved in the, like, the, the adult crew or somebody who has close contact with, with the school if we don't have somebody from the school board that wants to step up.
But when the, when the failed attempt, I was on that committee too, and one of the school board members was on that. And she dropped off because she said it was just too much of a burden. The school boards meet so often, but also adding the comp was just gonna, more than she could handle. So be careful on that.
Yeah.
That's just the order of advice.
Do you have any teachers that live in town?
I think having her on the, from the planning committee on is, is absolutely great.
Don't we have a lot of, like, police officers that live in this town?
We do, yes. We have a lot, a lot enforcement in town, that would be a good idea. Why we don't need a police station?
But I'm just thinking, I mean, they have a different insight than.
Yeah.
The rest of the state have, like, green acres, you know?
Right.
The problems that that presents and some of our weaknesses be your own.
Right. Interesting.
Just a thought. Solid waste, this is item number three, solid waste for recyclable material contracts.
I mean, do you want, do you have a long distance to go?
No, I already said we'd like to sit.
Oh, okay, I didn't wanna force you.
You missed that.
I didn't wanna make you feel like you had to stay for this.
No, that, that was it for comprehensive planning related stuff, I guess, and go, if you're really getting help.
Uh, no, 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 you're welcome to stay.
No, I thought.
Solid waste is a hot topic.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you. The contract is between the solid waste, the DA side of the waste in the town of West Bath expires September 30th, 2022. In addition to asking the town attorney to review the contract and make recommendations, the board might consider working with a good, good information facility to do the same.
So we, we also wanna make sure as, um, as we start to receive more town drop-off from, at our facility, we, I think we need to really address this.
We do, and we need to get moving on it because we all know how fast one year can go by.
And I think we also wanna address that they're starting work at 3:30 in the morning and it's not okay.
And the other thing that the recycling committee brought up, um, that didn't even cross my mind is that maybe there's another option other than the solid. So there is potentially a lot of laying work we can do to make sure that the town of West Bath is being served properly. Um, we're gonna need people to help us with that.
So is that something we should decide to go out to get on waste management companies?
It's a possibility, if you wanna go down that road.
If nothing else, I think it would let Casella know that she'll in.
Right.
And that they need to, um, perhaps figure out what's happening at 3:30 in the morning. Um, ensure that we haven't gone off of our, um, West Bath resident-only access on timeline and certain things that our, our residents are supposed to have certain priorities and I'm not sure that they still have them.
And just to make notice, every morning at 3:30, I have to go to work at 3:30 for the last month and every morning I'm meeting up with those trucks. So it's not my imagination, it's not, I thought I heard them all this month, they truly are operating at 3:30 in the morning.
I think when you sign the contract and what you give them, they have to have a local phone. You call Peter West Bath, it's always busy, no one answers the phone. You call Poland, they just kind of, uh, blow smoke, they don't give you a true answer.
Having their own issues right now.
I don't care about that.
Yeah.
They should be, they should be in local contact during the workday, break week, and not just a busy signal.
I hope somebody to answer the phone.
People are often calling Town Hall because that's where they're directing people to call. I don't know how much it costs or if they even take refrigerators. I.
Well, and then they've been pushing us to, to get a voucher system for them, which means we have to collect the money on their behalf. I'm not a fan of that. It's not our responsibility to make their pickup easier.
I'd really like to see an RFP, I, I'd really like to see a WhatsApp video.
I'm not even sure hours of access are appropriate. Um, that, you know, there's just, you, going through that contract, you can pick out any number of items that just don't match.
Well, and, and, and we've already seen Brunswick come here and there's other towns that have been, um, rumored on the horizon to be coming here. And I'm not sure that West Bath wants the excess traffic, the excess refuse that's falling out of trucks on our roadsides and not making it to the, the town site.
And not only that, if they're gonna do that, are they liable for the off the J-40 road? I mean, why should the town be repairing a road that they're having trucks?
As a, as a, they're giving the truck that off of it, so.
Is Brunswick coming to our placement?
Yep, and then I, there's another town, is it Scarborough, who was the other town? I thought it began with that.
I did see there was another town.
That's, that's petition to, to, and, and they're just accepting them. And, and, and that's a, a, our, at their benefit and our cost.
So I think in a contract, we need to have some say over other towns that use our recycling sector. I don't think they, well, unless we're gonna put in, again, that, that they're gonna maintain and repair roads that they use in West Bath. I mean, seriously? Cause if they're gonna put all that weight on the road and we have to maintain it, that's.
Well, hopefully the road is built to handle that in snow cars.
Um, I, I have a, I have a question about whether or not, and it's just a question, I don't have any, I don't have any answer. Whether or not, um, an RFP is going to be useful in view of the fact that it seems as though, um, recycling, although it's very popular, is not very profitable at this point in the economy. So whether or not somebody else is going to want to rent our space at the price that we've been getting for that space, I think is, is of curiosity.
Well, we should, I, I would certainly welcome Casella coming in and chatting with us. As, as we wave this out, um, we, we did request a meeting with them.
I hear you, but that hasn't been productive.
It hasn't been productive and it's, that year in line to.
Well, but, but I'd like to bring, actually bring that up face-to-face with them. And, and certainly have Davis, you know, we want to, before we move, before we get to the, to this consideration of another contract, let's talk about how we looked this last year ago.
Well, I think in, in respect for Sally, um, if this is something that the board wants Sally to review, we need to get it to her right away.
Yeah.
So that she can come up with some recommendations.
I think we need recommendations, I think one of them, is that fee still a reasonable fee based on the cost of how things have gone up?
Well, and there's making other carting elements that they're certainly collecting fees on that we're not, um, from other towns, so they're.
One of the things in this contract says vehicle access out of 4 AM.
Yeah.
It's a very good contract if they're there.
It's only saying that, it's still too early, it's, you know, no idling of trucks and no.
Do we still have a fee for any time those crosses scales?
Look, we get tipping fees in addition to rent.
So if the world trash that goes through their recycling, you get more of a fee.
And it's not just. How, how are we tabulating that, though?
I didn't ask that, I just asked if we're just getting, still getting a fee.
And it's not just for recycling, it's all waste that they process through there.
We get, we get tipping.
We get a monthly fee from them saying, this is, this is your price.
So would we see it go up substantially since Brunswick came in there? We should see a substantial increase in revenue if we've taken another town. I'd love to see where that is.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can get some numbers.
Yeah, but I mean, in theory, if we doubled a town, add a, a full town to that, a town much bigger than we are.
There's no comparison here, but we can get some comparison.
We should see some money from that. And that's where, I mean, the how are we tab, it kind of goes to how are we tabulating that tipping fee and are we getting it to be accurate?
I would wanna know what Sally thinks, any recommendations she has for us to, to move forward.
Cause we don't even know if we're being compensated appropriately.
For the rent?
Right.
And tipping fees, all of it.
This, um, this contract, contract is originally negotiated without form of town attorney.
And it was on an auto renewal.
So we were, we were town and manager, which. Yeah, you're right. So this time we had an updated look.
It's been $28,000 for it.
Yeah, since 2007.
No, no, we were for that.
Yeah, this is just, was renegotiated by Adam in 2007. It was really renegotiated, it was more of a standard.
Yep. Careful with finding.
And it says, as part of the consideration, physical, the primary shall renovate and add additional facilities. Has that ever happened?
Say it again?
It says, as part of the consideration of the agreement, Prime Tree shall renovate and add new additional facilities. Has anything been renovated or added? New access areas and travel ways shall, on the proposed plan, shall be paved and constructed in accordance with town road standard. The parking areas for vehicles need, I mean, what's been done in the last?
Well, he added a camper. No?
So I really think this needs to be looked at. I think they got a good deal and they're taking advantage of us.
Not necessarily.
Well, then, it's time for me to negotiate, so we.
Well, I think I would have Sally look at it first on what we should be asking for and then give them a shot at what they think they would like to pay us and we'll see what it looks like.
Um, do we know who else might be, um, might, might know something about the transfer station?
We have Rogers, I mean, I don't know how.
Jesus Halls and then it's all good.
But he may know.
But wouldn't he know?
He's a town member too now.
Wouldn't he have some thoughts, input ideas or no?
I'm sure he does.
I would, I mean, I'd love to have him come and chat with us on, on what he sees from that facility, what, what should be improved at that facility. I would welcome him to come to the town and chat with us.
He may not want to, he may not want, but I think, yeah, we can invite him.
I'm sitting here thinking about you guys asking about tipping fees. You know, the recycling that they pick up at the street, they don't, they don't pay us anything for that. I mean, they don't run that, those trucks across the scales.
Right.
And of course, I've never done that. I, either Tuesday afternoon or Saturday, I take my recycling out there and dump it myself. And that, I don't go across the scales, so there's, there's a whole truck being loaded with recycling on a Tuesday afternoon or Saturday, um, with recycling, it's not, that doesn't get weighed, it's trash, it gets weighed, and construction debris and stuff like that.
Well, the other part of that, it doesn't necessarily get weighed either, cause every time my husband takes something up there, it's always, oh, give us a 20 and I really don't think, I think that 20's going in the pocket. Um, nothing's being weighed, it's always this random.
Which is why they were trying to go to the vouchers, so that you had to pay in a voucher versus cash, so it went somewhere. But that again, is forcing us to maintain their, run their credit for them. And I'm not sure I wanna go down that path.
When you go in there and it's, I mean, pickup load is 25 bucks. If you've got a pickup loader trash or construction type debris. But I see pickup trucks going in there that are giant and they're loaded eight feet high with sideboards. I don't know what they're charging.
$25 a pickup truck?
It depends, it depends if it's cash or if you see the $25 in your pocket.
Which then comes down to what is our tipping fee out of the cash, which we're not seeing, so it's, um.
So Sally, do we do it?
Yeah. I think we have to, because I'll be honest with you, I don't know.
Well, hopefully she's worked on other contracts, other, other towns, we should very happy to know.
Right. I'm pretty sure that somebody in the firm has worked with trash.
I would think so.
And that's, that's a good place to start.
And actually, you know, one town, it is a pretty big business, so. Okay, town administrators before.
Okay, I heard that from Mark Ballard from Jensen Bear, who was working on Walden Renewables' solar, proposed solar project. Um, Walden Renewables has decided they don't want to pursue a project right now. Um, they might consider it in the future. Uh, their concerns are related to the net energy billing and the new requirements for qualifying for the program. So they're not saying off the table completely, but they just don't feel like they can pursue it right now. Mark suggested that West Bath might consider doing an RFP if we think that's a big use for that property, um, to put an RFP out to see if any other companies. um, to put an RFP out to see if any other companies are interested.
Do we have a second company approach us?
Yes, for the property over by William Farm, it was a different.
But that, maybe it's, if they're interested in doing it, maybe that location would make sense for them, too.
It's possible that they're still looking at that.
It's, um.
Other location.
I think, as my understanding is, that one of the people who was involved is a landowner, or has been. So they may not be interested in somebody else's land, including ours, to do their project. Yeah, but it, it might be worth putting on an RFP, just to see if there's somebody out there who might be interested.
I mean, if it's land that the town can't see us using in the future, and we think it's a good use for that property, it's a possibility.
I think the, um, would, would, would the town property be sufficient?
I would, I would offer to the people that are, that I would say this was a consideration, it's not happening, do you wanna look here as well?
Well, we need to be able to tell them clearly that the other side is off the table before we do that.
I'm telling that, the other side.
Well, I don't know that we've determined that yet. I don't know, because we're gonna have people to the meeting, the others to the meeting, and talk to them about their level of interest in.
Right.
Having a project over there.
So that having, if we have it.
Right.
So they might then be interested in the town property, if there's no hesitation.
There's nothing you need to decide tonight, it's just.
There's no future for thought. Hurry, no priority, no desperate need for this, so. Okay, well, that's too bad.
Yeah, it's too bad, but I understand their concerns.
Well, if, if, if a project isn't gonna make economic sense, it doesn't make any sense for.
Right, they get the legislation going out coming.
Well, we're glad they didn't start and then have the legislation happen, cause then we'd have a half-baked project.
Well, now it would have preceded it, so it would have snuck in before.
Right, that's true.
If it was ongoing.
Yeah.
So I attended Morse High School in Bath, Texas ribbon cutting last evening. It's a nice ceremony, very simple. The officials went out of their way to recognize West Bath. They recognized the elected officials that helped them through the process, they thanked the taxpayers. Um, I just wanted to let you know that they made, they, we got a very respectable shout-out from the superintendent and the principal, and the other folks who spoke at the ribbon cutting. Being able to tour Zildi is very impressive. So I was glad to be there, so I could check it out and see all the good work that they're doing over there. West Bath was recognized by MMA for the Excellence Award for our annual town report. Yay, Carly, yay, Carly. So the Excellence Award is for third place in our population group, so. Job well done.
She's not happy, she wants first.
She's going first. Next year.
We can post town reports in everyone. Then we're due August 30th.
So they're judged on excellent content, um, organization, and visual appeal.
Well, Carly, you have definitely made a world of difference in our visual appeal. And we, we always have good contact, and the organization is pretty good, but the.
We owe it all to Steve Reno for that beautiful culvert that's, that's the star of the show, and everyone loves seeing it on the town report.
Yeah.
And we got the beaver to see that.
Yeah. I've been told it looks much bigger in the picture than it does in person, but.
As long as it's working, it doesn't matter.
Exactly. It is a beautiful project.
That's all I got.
That's good.
That's good. Oh, is there any future agenda, are you? Well, I think we should have a meeting. Next, what? Well, seventh.
Seventh, yeah.
So that will be here, correct?
It'll be here in October.
Here.
All of October, is here?
Yes.
Okay. Any public comments?
Any new boat situation?
The letter is going to the state probably Monday. Okay, good. They have not responded, notified letters came back.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
So how many boats are, um, in violation?
Four. There are four in that pond.
Mm-hmm.
And a log on the other side.
Yep. That's just a disaster waiting to happen.
What are you talking about?
The abandoned boats.
Huh? The abandoned boats on the other side of Mill Pond.
On the culvert.
Oh, that's the one in something.
There's a picture of the town report.
I didn't recognize it.
Was that a first-place ticket?
Third place.
Third place. Need more plates for third place.
Or less boats, we need less boats for first place.
All in favor?
Carly, if I come down someday, will you help me with the town report that's due?